Call to order, please. You all will stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Gary Thomas, pastor of the First Baptist Church of Lowell.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a comment. This is a beautiful facility. I told some of my friends this would hold a lot of angry people. I'm kidding. I'm kidding you. This is a beautiful place, and I'm glad that this is here. Let's pray. Father, thank you for these good, hard-working people that administrate our city here, and there's so much that goes on, and things that we're probably not aware of that goes on that's handled. And I just ask you, Lord, to be with the leadership here, and that you will bless them, and bless this city, Lord, and help us to be a good neighbor, and that we can make this a place of growth, one that would be progressive, that could reach out, and help the people around us, and make this city a place that we're proud to live in. And we thank you for this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next item will be the swearing-in ceremony for the new council members, conducted by Brenda DeShields, Benton County Circuit Clerk. Will the following council members please come and stand in front? Linda Shimko, Jerry Foley, Eric Shine, Darren Brock, Keith Williams, Kendall Stuckey, Marty Latham, and Paula Allred.
Linda, Linda, put your purse down. All of you raise your right hand, and we're going to do a group swearing, and I will say a phrase when I get to the part where I say state your name. Please put your name in there, go ahead, put your name in that slot in your division, what you were elected to be. I state your name.
I, Eric.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
That I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office of, state your office.
State your office.
And for the city of Lowell.
For the city of Lowell.
Upon the time now about to end.
On the time now about to end.
Congratulations. Don't go away. Paula Allred. Here's your signature. Mary Latham. Kendall. Keith Williams. Darren Brock. Eric Shine. Jerry Foley. This is a good position. Congratulations, Paula.
Council may be seated. Brenda, thanks for coming out tonight, and I want to welcome the new council member for 2009. Next item on the agenda is a roll call.
Present.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Shine.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Present.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. We have one item tonight. That's the council minutes from the regular meeting December 16, 2008. If there's no question, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum. We have one speaker, Mary Mason.
Well, you don't see me speak very much because I'm not a very good speaker, but I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council, and especially the citizens of Lowell, for the beautiful building that you've provided for us. Of course, you know that it's paid for free and clear, and that's quite an accomplishment for this town. All of the employees and I really appreciate it, so I just want to say thanks again.
Thank you, Mary. Next items, I'd like to amend the agenda. The mayor's request to amend the agenda as follows. Under old business, add item A as follows. Contract addendum number two with rolloff services. Under new business, add item D as follows. Amended resolution number 08-15. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Next item under old business is a contract addendum number two with rolloff. Sean.
The previous meeting we had tabled because we didn't have all the actual breakdown on the rates, which are all provided to you now. If you have any questions, I can answer them, or we have Tom Smith with rolloff here to go over any of the charges or the way they're broke out.
There was a change in the cost of living.
There is, according to the CPI index.
Yeah.
Also, the original contract allows a 3% increase per year, and that's what you see reflected here.
Okay, but it's different than the other resolutions.
Previously, it had two, 3% increases.
When will the citizens be notified if as soon as we approve it? Will there be a letter going out? Is that how it's going to be addressed?
We had not planned on sending a notice of letter. Matter of fact, the invoicing would be mailed out tomorrow, and it would be a note on the invoice, on the bottom of the invoice, showing that there would be a rate increase.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the execution of this contract, addendum number two with rolloff.
I move that we approve the addendum.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Next item is new business, a resolution to approve and authorize a lease for the city of Lowell, City Council chambers, on certain days for use as a senior center. Greg Stanfield.
Well, I've had an opportunity to visit with each of the council members, and I've given you the background a little bit of this senior center that we're proposing for Lowell. I am a member of the board of the Lowell Recreation Association, and so this has been one of our dreams, and one of the things I wanted to do tonight was to introduce you to our board and the people that have worked so hard to make this become a reality. Janie Wells, Roger Hankins, Rick McLeod, Missy Beaman, and my wife, Sonia. Don't miss anybody else. So this is a hard-working group that has worked hard to try to bring this into reality, and again, I've given you the background, and I've given you the history, and we just asked for your support tonight. Jerry Mitchell with the Area Agency on Aging is going to come now and, I guess, answer any questions that you may have, and explain the structure a little better.
Thank you, Greg, mayor, council, and guest. I'm Jerry Mitchell. I'm the executive director for the Area Agency on Aging. The Area Agency on Aging is the agency that was set up by Congress to advocate and provide services to the elderly. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we provide the services in Benton County through our senior centers, through the Office of Human Concern located here in Benton County in Lowell, I'm sorry, in Rogers. And we have three senior centers that we currently contract with them to manage. There's one in Solomon Springs, one in Grabot, and there's one in Bentonville. And we're hoping that we're going to have one in Gentry and one in Lowell this time next week. So we also have five housing complexes that we have here, and we employ about 50 to 75 employees at any one time here in Benton County. So we have responsibility for nine counties, but we're delighted that we have an opportunity here with y'all's agreement to enter into a lease, to use this building here on a temporary basis for a senior center until we can get one built, or we can find one that we hope that'll hold about 50 or 60 people on a daily basis. We would anticipate and hope that we'd have that many using it. I would like to introduce Nancy Johnson and Susan Moore. Nancy is the Director of Senior Services for Office of Human Concern. She's the one that we contract with and work closely with. Susan will be the new director for the Lowell Senior Activity Center, and right now she's the Assistant Director at the Benton County Senior Activity Center up in Bentonville. And with that, I will try to answer any questions that y'all might have, and be happy to try to do what I can to please you, if that's the case.
Eric?
I had a citizen ask me a question. Are there going to be any children allowed to any of these functions?
The way the activities are set up, it's for seniors that are 60 years of age or older are their guests, and children do come in with the grandparents. It's usually grandparents at the senior center, but as a rule, there's usually not children in the senior activity center. They're not prohibited, let me point that out, but they would be as a guest.
How many people do you have signed up for?
Right now, we, no one, until we officially get a place to locate, no, we don't have anyone, but we did a survey of about 250 people that meet at First Baptist Church one Thursday a month, and that's what we based coming in and setting up a senior center here in Lowell, plus the 70-plus that's down in your senior housing complex down here. We feel that there's really a pressing need. We agreed with Greg and the association that we really needed to be in here trying to do something.
If not, oh, excuse me.
I do have another question, but it's not for the show. It'll be for either you or Tom. Would this set a precedence for anybody else?
No, this is a nonprofit organization, and right now, that's what it's used for. They will use the facility from 9:00 to 11:30, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The museum wants to use it Tuesdays and Thursdays from about 9:00 to maybe 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. So, and then, of course, we'll have some use for it too, so we have to save some time for ourselves. Our major effort here is try to help the area aging get started in Lowell, because this is much needed here. Yes.
Mayor, I just have one comment. In the lease itself, it says that we would be here from about 9:00 to 11:30. About 11:00, Susan, or the van driver, will pick seniors up that want to go in to Bentonville and eat lunch at the senior activity center there, and it may be 1:00 or so before they actually physically get them back here and all that. So sometimes, we will need to flex a little bit on that 11:30, and we don't want to mislead the council on that.
We won't throw you out at 11:30.
Okay, all right.
We're pretty easy to get along with. Marie?
I have a question, and I was concerned when I read the paper about the city charging the, your agency for the usage of the building. Is this a common thing?
What, we have 27 senior centers in the nine counties that we're responsible for, and although we don't pay direct rent to the city on the city-owned buildings, it's not uncommon for us to pay all the utilities, all of the repairs, and different things like this. Nancy's got agreements, and she's had agreements with, for instance, Madison County. And while we don't pay them rent directly, we do end up paying money to them. This, in this situation, on a short-term basis, Nancy and Susan, they feel like they can raise that kind of money, and they have put in the budget. It will require, you know, a little bit more extra money, be raised locally within the community, but it's not uncommon. We have arrangements where we either take care of the building, or pay the utilities or something like that.
Well, I was so delighted to see it in the paper about it, and I felt like the citizens of this community support the city and its functions. I mean, it's taxpayers' money that goes into that, so I was concerned that there's a possibility of a large charge there, and I feel like personally that we should keep it as minimal or not at all.
Yeah, and we, the Area Agency on Aging gets federal and state funds that we get through grants, and in most cases, Nancy, we have enough to pay about 50% of the cost, and the community usually has to raise the other 50%. It's just seed money, and the communities are all very supportive, and it depends on the kind of services that you have, on how much support you can get. So, and I appreciate those comments, and it's nice meeting you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
This will be resolution number 0901.
Next item on the agenda is the Christie Creek sewer line extension. These of you have a memo that I sent you regarding this extension. It runs from 264 East just about to the railroad tracks. It covers all of the land, all the way east to the railroad tracks. I've been working with Springdale Water on how to pay for this line. As it works out, 57% of the drainage area is in Lowell, and 42% is in Springdale. That was a division that we used to arrive at the payment method to pay for this line. I attended the Springdale Water Commission meeting on December 17, '08. The Water Commission unanimously agreed to support this proposal. Our part of this line is 42.5%, which is, I didn't bring my numbers. Anyway.
It's a 57.5%.
I thought I had it. I thought I had it broken out, I don't think. Oh, it's $539,666. In this agreement, Lowell agreed, or Springdale agreed to provide the inspection service, which is a cost of about $45,000. Lowell agrees to provide the easements for the line. We will pay for our part of the line with $300,000, which is left from the Puppy Creek Interceptor Line bond. Springdale has agreed that we could use that towards this $539,000. We are in the process right now of working with landowners and developers to help support this line, and we've raised considerable money so far. So just guessing, I would guess that we'll have to take in the neighborhood of $100,000 from the bond, our own utilities bond, to pay for it. There'll be nothing from the general fund to pay for it.
Mr. Mayor, do we have an ordinance in effect that will help us recover the costs for the sewer line as that land develops? Do we have an ordinance to recover the?
We will write the ordinance. We're asking the developers and landowners to pay for undeveloped land $1,000 an acre upfront.
Okay.
Now, you know, we have an ordinance on the I-540 sewer line. As it develops, we collect 5 cents a square foot, and that's pretty cheap compared to land that's bringing $10 or $12 a square foot. We will write such an ordinance for the Christie Creek line, and we're also working on another sewer line, but that's how we plan to pay for it, and if the council agrees, I'll sign this agreement with Springdale. That's all that's necessary. But I wanted to bring this so you all will know exactly what's going on upfront, what the costs are. There's no questions. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I think this is great. This is a great opportunity.
Well, I think it is too, for Lowell. We're spending a lot of money on infrastructure. If we get this line built, we'll build the third one out west, which is what we call the 264 industrial park area. It will be financed the same way. The landowners are putting up, and developers, putting up half of the money or more, and the city of Lowell will pay the rest, and as that line develops, we'll collect our fees. So we will have some money in it, but I don't see that we should expect them to pay the whole thing, so, but we'll be all right. I mean, we're, we'll come out all right. I think in the I-540 sewer line, we'll have something like $50,000 in it when it's all developed and paid for, so.
What's the timing on this?
The engineers are designing it right now. That's how we came up with the figures. If you all agree with my signing this memo, the line will be built this year. We're that far along with it. But we took it to that point before, you know, we got an agreement between Springdale and Lowell, so we would have some idea of the numbers we're talking about. So if I, I'd like to hear a voice vote of those in favor of signing the agreement.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Where is this line running exactly? I mean, where's it starting and ending at?
It starts just south of J.B. Hunt.
Okay.
In that lowland.
Okay.
And it goes east. It'll go through the little lake at, what's that housing area? Brookhaven. It'll cross over and go just south or north of the International Truck Agency, cross Lincoln, and go, I don't know, maybe 600, 700 feet, then turn south about 20 or 200 feet. That will encompass the entire line.
How's Springdale? I mean, where is their land at in any of that?
It's south of J.B. Hunt.
Okay, that's where Springdale starts, so Beth Heights is.
Some east, yes.
Okay.
It's strange. If Bethel Heights wasn't on their step system, this sewer line takes in their entire town they could get on it.
Is there an agreement about people having to hook on to this line?
We use, let me back up. This city, in its agreement with Springdale, signed the contract that said Lowell would make everybody within 300 feet of this line tie on. That's the state law, and that's what the city signed. Springdale does not do that. They are saying if the people are within 300 feet, as long as a present system works, they don't have to tie on. So we're kind of following that practice, since when we build these lines, we have to turn them over to Springdale. So we're following their practice.
Do we know an average cost for a citizen to tie into the line? I guess it depends.
Tie into it.
How much piping there is from their home, or is there a cost to tap it?
Five cents a foot for the property, plus the tie-in fee, which is, yeah.
It's about, it's going to be about $1,500 for a residential cap, if that's what you were asking, but then commercial is based on their size of their water meter. It goes up according to how large they are. I think the high end is like $8,000, and the low end of a commercial is about $25,000 or $2,000.
It is very important to the city of Lowell that we run these sewer lines, because I've been on that sewer line business since January of '07. The reason being, when the Puppy Creek Interceptor Line was built, I ran some numbers on it, and at that time showed beyond a shadow of a doubt that that line would not pay for itself. We are supplementing that line right now. What was it, $80,000 last year? We're going to run out of su- We're gonna run out of supplements, one, funds one of these days, folks, and that's why sewer lines are so important to the City of Lowell because once our utility fund is dry, then we have to start paying for it from the general fund. Uh, I calculated the, if we have a 3% growth on this sewer line, on the Puppy Creek Interceptor Line, it will be, I think it's 2019, before it even comes close to breaking even. If we do not grow enough to meet the payments, the City of Lowell will have paid an additional $2.2 million on top of the $3.2 million for that sewer line. It's extremely critical to Lowell, in my view, in the long run, maybe not today, five years, 10 years now, it is very important.
Mayor?
Jerry?
I, I've just got one, one question. With the land use bond, the leftover land use bond coming off the Puppy Creek and then the remainder of kind of landowners' developers' improvement bond, the utilities, if we have to dig into that, which you say we're probably gonna have to, a certain amount, I can't remember where we are on the utilities, uh, right now and the monies in the utility fund, but when does all this money have to be paid out within this year? Completion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so do we have enough to cover that in your estimation? We have enough to do it?
We have enough to cover.
Uh, without, uh, without further ado, I, I move that we approve the, uh, did we go ahead and approve the Christie Creek sewer line extension?
Any other questions?
There's a motion?
Yes.
There was a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, amending ordinances of the City of Lowell to amend plumbing permit and inspection fees. Don?
I emailed some background information on my request to council members this afternoon. I hope you got that, several of them. I had bum emails for, I left a copy at your position. I hope that answers questions. I'm here to answer any other questions you may have or explain.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules placed on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko. Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
An ordinance, amending ordinances of the City of Lowell to amend plumbing permit and inspection fees. If there's no further comments or questions, I'll approve, or entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 852.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution setting forth the meeting rules of the City Council for the City of Lowell. I think we ask you all to look at those. If you have any changes, well, we'll, we'll go back and make them. The same as we, we had last year.
Wasn't this brought, excuse me, wasn't this brought up the last council meeting?
To change the address of the council meeting.
Got you.
It was changed at that time.
Alright, that's what it was.
If there's no questions, I'll just entertain a motion. We adopt them for 2009.
I move we approve these rules for this year then.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
This will be resolution number 09-02.
Committee reports and setting of committee meetings, parks, recreation, and special events, sidewalks and streets, personnel committee, finance committee, utilities committee, ordinance committee. Museum committee. The museum meets the second Tuesday of each month, 6:00 p.m. at the museum.
Mr. Mayor, I might just point out, since we have new council members, we might need to look at our committee members to see if, if we need to rework those.
Yes, I, I'd hoped to have that done for this meeting, but I, I didn't get them done there. We'll, we'll get them.
Okay.
We'll get them. At our next meeting on January the 20th, Chamber of Commerce will host an open house, or refreshments for our open house, starting at 6:00. Following the open house, I will give the state, the State of the City address for 2009 forward and also a progress report for 2008. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If no objections, the meeting is adjourned.